All right. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Winters.
Here.
Eckhart.
Here.
Hamilton.
Here.
Stelling.
Here.
Henford.
Here.
Wallace.
Here.
Martin. Sherman.
We have a quorum, so we'll go ahead and get started. Item four is discussion and action on the consent agenda. All of the following items, which concern reports and items of a routine nature normally approved at city council meetings, will be approved by one vote of the council. Any member of the council desiring to discuss an item on the consent agenda may request that it be removed from the consent agenda and placed for discussion as the next item on the regular agenda. It will then be considered separately. The consent agenda consists of the consideration and action of the following items. Item A, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting, July 20th, 2020. And item B, approval of claims in the amount of $219,948.15 and payroll expenses of $204,948.26. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second. Having a motion by Mrs. Hamilton and second by Mr. Stelling to approve the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Hamilton.
Yes.
Stelling.
Yes.
Wallace.
Yes.
Henford.
Yes.
Eckhart.
Yes.
Winters.
Item six is reports from staff. First item is a hospital authority meeting on July 21st. Dr. Henford.
Again, our regular CEOs report and our CFOs report. We, the hospital, as the business was picking up, you know, Dr. Galbraith's numbers were increasing at the clinic, which was good. We had a good, the hospital had a good July. And also, we talked about with some of the COVID money that was available to reimburse them on some things, ended up the fiscal year in the black, which was a great thing. Couple new hires. Chris Lauderdale hired as the new CFO. And David Kemp is going to be the new HR director. Chris has already started, and David Kemp will start September 1. They did talk about, they did a survey with the Quapi that we talked about quite a bit, and one thing they wanted to improve on at the hospital was their onboarding process. So they've been doing some personal development through Paycom to improve their onboarding The only, we actually had no questions to go. We had more appointments to active staff for the credentialing, which was Dr. Galbraith. And then we had several different policies that were approved. Be happy to answer any questions.
Does the council have any questions for Dr. Henford? Thank you. Next item is the public library board meeting on August 3rd, 2020. Director.
Director Hamilton, or Director Autt, I believe now. So there's a change there. Reported that in the month of July, we had 949 items checked out from the in-house collection. So checkouts are starting to level out with what they used to be. So we have almost 1,000 items. They're still not allowing patrons in the library past the front desk. So if there's a book or something that you want to check out, you go up to the front desk, they tell you. They have moved two computers into the breezeway area for those people who want to use the internet, so they don't have to be back and forth to the other areas. They are considering possibly adding another one just because of the usage that has been going on, a lot of people coming in. And she said they, even before school started, they had college kids in there wanting to use the computers, look stuff up. So, internet was, wireless internet was accessed 535 times in the month of July. We finished out, they finished out the summer reading program. Although it was done virtually, they felt that it was a pretty big success. They took kind of some of the stuff that happened and kind of thought about ways they could improve upon it in terms of how they get that information out. They had a couple of virtual videos that were viewed several hundreds of times. Kids were watching them at home and things like that. They're looking at possibly doing some other things this fall with virtual, maybe some over meetings over online and things like that. The friends at the library purchased them a new multi-function copier printer, which they'd needed for a while, and that was purchased through a donation through the friends, and that's actually working really well. Thankfully, we not have to replace another AC. They were concerned that might have to be the case. Ultimately, it just needed free on and had a contact point that needed to replace, because you guys remember, those of you that have been on for a while, it seems like about every year we have to replace an AC in the library. So that's been beneficial. Let's see here. Curbside is still available. Library staff is probably going to start wearing masks. I don't know if they have yet or not, but she said that in the meeting. They're still not, like I said, they're still not letting people use the bathrooms, the phones, things like that, just to keep safety, so to speak. And, I don't, I was not here last month. The only thing that I, that might want to be mentioned is we did have elections again. This would have been at the July meeting, but we had elections again. Everybody was elected their existing position. Lynn was elected chairman again, and Director Autt was elected secretary, so that's about it.
Does the council have any questions for Mr. Eckhart? Thank you. Item C is Parks and Buildings Committee meeting on August 4th, 2020. Mrs. Hamilton.
Oh, wrong. Anything? Oh.
Parks and Buildings.
Yeah. Okay. Do I have my information?
Okay. Just briefly, they have stock quotes on engineering firms to do an inspection of the pool, and they are looking at funding opportunities and pursuing a grant for that. And we will likely see something come out of that Parks and Buildings Committee as a recommendation for the September council meeting. So, anything?
I think I covered it pretty much. Probably should have talked about.
Any questions from the council? All right, the Alva Regional Airport Commission meeting on August 10th, 2020. Most of these, the items that were on that agenda are later in our agenda as well, so I won't report on those. I will say that we did briefly go over airport CDs that are coming up, and Beau may touch on that as well, but whether or not to, at our next meeting, we'll hopefully have guidance from the airport board, what they want to do with their CDs, whether to reinvest or to have them cashed in. Happy to answer any questions. Public Safety Committee meeting on August 13th, 2020. Mrs. Hamilton.
That one I do have. Very interesting meeting, a lot of ideas. Our biggest discussion was on the RFP, which is for the EMS and to send out proposals to see if we want someone to come in. A lot of information will be coming out and to you as soon as everything's published and finalized and approved. Review the, we reviewed a pound fee proposal. Officer Orkut had some points for us, and I think he's going to share some of those fee increases, and he's going to go over those to tell us just why we need to do this.
Okay, so we got to do some research on the pound fees and found out that the last time those had been changed was in 1974. Currently, the pound fee for the first time your animal's captured is $10. The second time is $15, and the third time is $25. And typically, those animals are held for 72 hours prior, held for 72 hours, and then after that, we try to adopt them out. What I'm recommending is that those fees be raised. We spoke with about half a dozen other departments our size that had pounds and asked them kind of the way they did things. We were definitely the lowest by far, but my recommendation is that we raise those fees. The first time offense would be $25, the second time offense would be $35, and the third time offense would be $45. And after the third time, we would start issuing citations along with the $45 pound fee. Also to that, what I, my recommendation is, is that we charge a $10 per day pound fee. This is pretty common, and the $10 is pretty common, and it just helps pay for having somebody out there to take care of the animals, the food, that type of stuff. Along with that, currently, we have a $37 adoption fee. And like I said, after 72-hour hold, trying to get ahold of the owner or return the animal back to the owner, then those animals are available for adoption for other, other people to come out to adopt. What we've asked, and met with several different groups in town, and what we have asked is that after that 72-hour hold, if they're available for adoption, is within, within five days that they have those animals out for adoption, whether they're in foster or whether they have been moved on for adoption. And so what we're asking the fee for, the adoption fee to go up to, is we would waive all of the other fees, and there would be a set $50 adoption fee, which is basically the $10 a day.
Can you tell them how many dogs have been adopted out?
So in, from June 2019 until July 1st, basically, July 1st of 19, June of 2020, we had 128 dogs picked up, taken into the pound. Of those animals, 125 were adopted. We had three animals that were euthanized. Of those three, two were owner request, so actually, the only thing we did was transport them to the vet, and owner paid the bill and all that, we just transported. The other one was euthanized because it had attacked and bit a toddler. So our animal control gets a pretty bad rap. People think that she's out there trying to catch dogs and destroy them, and that's actually not the truth. It's further the thing from the truth. She works really hard to get those animals in good homes. In the, doing the research for this, we found that probably our biggest problem is communication. We've taken numerous steps to try to get improvements on that. One of the things that we've started is a Facebook page for animal control. Sunshine's done a great job of posting on that and letting people know the animals that have been picked up, when they're available to be adopted, and how much that's going to cost.
Okay, and the other one is, if the dogs picked up on Friday, because Sunshine doesn't work Saturday and Sunday?
Correct. What we want to do is no longer charge people for those days that the animals are not available for pickup. So Saturday and Sunday wouldn't count towards your, towards your five days or your three days or whatever, so.
For the pets that are adopted, are they, is anything about, like, they're neutered or just?
Currently, we're not, we're not doing that or requiring that. We do have, we've had talks about having them microchipped. We just recently found out that that's about $5 to have that done. In the past, we were told it was about $25 per dog, so it was just kind of not reasonable. But with it being $5, we can microchip the animals before we release them, and we'll be able to track them better. We would like to talk to our local vets to find out if we could kind of get a deal on having them spayed or neutered and then pass that along to the owner once they get out, but that's just, we haven't talked to any vets or anything for that yet, so.
How many times do you go to, like, even the third, pick up three times?
Oh, a bunch.
Would be maybe start, you said after the third time, you start, like, the fines. Would be, I mean, does it come to the point that it gets so expensive to pick them up that they don't, won't do it?
Well, once we write a citation, you're going to be responsible for the citation whether you pick your animal up or not.
I was wondering, maybe don't start sooner, because it's multiple.
And the deal with that is it gets abused. We do have people that know we're going to hold that dog for, I mean, we've held dogs for three weeks. You know, they went on their vacation, and we held their dogs for $10 or $15, and then they came home and adopted their dog or got their dog back out. So it's pretty cheap. So we're hoping that will, you know, the $10 a day will kind of curb that, and the citation after the third time will kind of curb people from.
The next thing we discussed was adding no parking signs on 8th Street across from the college, where they pull out there. Right now, it's short-term parking, but we've had complaints of horse trailers parking over there and blocking people's driveways.
I've had at least one person come that lives, lives there on 8th Street, come to me. Their concern is, is when those big trucks are parked there, that it's hard for vehicles that are leaving the parking lot, Northwestern parking lot, to turn out. And also, while they're parked there, it's not, it's not enough room to get a fire truck through if we needed to. Currently, it's two-hour parking that Northwestern has posted. I actually just spoke with Mr. Peggy about that a little bit, and we're going to have meetings with the college and kind of talk to them about our ideas and what we'd like to see going forward.
And she has called numerous people, not just them, but she's, anyway. And the other one was stop signs.
We had some questions about stop signs around some of the schools. And we know some of those are two-way stops, some of them are three-way stops, and the reason those were put that way in the beginning is for easy flow for buses. So we're going to kind of take a look at that and see if that's still needed. If not, we'll make a recommendation, you know, whether to leave those as two ways or three ways or add more stop signs.
Thank you so much.
And that resolution will likely be next city council meeting for the pound fee.
Just because of the short range, we didn't have time to get it out.
Are there any questions from the council? Thank you. Next item is Finance Committee meeting on August 17th, 2020. Dr. Henford.
We met, reviewed and signed our claims, some large claims, general fund, we had bulk fuel of over $10,000. Our hotel tax fund, $6,000 for stock charge and $4,500 for wave finding signage. Airport fund, we had engineering fees for a little over $14,000. AUA debt services for over, a little over $45,000. Some good news, our cash balance is much better. At the end of July, cash balance for the city of Alva was $163,000, $194.69, and we had our investments at a little, just right under 1.6 million. We did review our CDs. We've got several that we will be renewing our CDs, and as Mayor Parker talked about, we'll have one from the airport that we're going to basically take a recommendation from the airport board and let them decide what they want to do with the CD with several of their projects coming up. Sales tax during the month of July, we were up about almost 9% from the prior month of June, and then about 8.5% up from July of 2019. We did go over our budget requests that we saw from expenditures and revenues from departments. Our department heads continue to do a good job to spend within their budgets that were given to them for each month, and it's much appreciated. I'm going to let Angelica talk a little bit about the utility billing reports in her report. So with that, we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Does the council have any questions? Thank you. Next item is the mayor's report. I think everybody's aware that school is back in session, both at public schools as well as university and Tech Center too, I believe. And with that, I can, seen a lot of out-of-state tags in town here lately with the college getting back in, and so that's always, it's always an exciting time of year. I will let the council know that I've received a handful of phone calls with citizens interested in a mask ordinance, and I don't know that, it's a, it's a tough spot to be in, to be in a council seat and have to consider that. I've seen other city councils fight over it for months and, you know, maybe days in a row, trying to figure out what the right thing is to do with that. If anything were to happen with a mask ordinance, that would require council approval. But, you know, I, my opinion being that what it is and that one, would be that if you think you need to wear one, obviously, wear one, and if you're worried about other people wearing them, then, you know, just exercise some caution with the COVID-19 stuff going around. We are, right now, in Woods County, we have one active case, and so we're at a very low risk at this time, and we continue to monitor the State Department of Health's mapping of where the high occurrence of COVID-19 is and continue to keep an eye on that. And, you know, should things drastically change, it'll probably be a conversation the Public Safety Committee has, and if any recommendations for that come out, those will be coming from the Public Safety Committee to the council. I have encouraged the citizens that have contacted me to go ahead and contact council members to let them know their concerns, and hopefully, they will. But that's where we're at on that. I will, one other thing before, right before the meeting, received some mail from the Department of Transportation. It looks like they're looking to start some roadwork, I haven't even read this fully, but east of town on 64. And so they've got some right-of-way documents here for us to look at, and so that may be coming up soon. And I think that's all I have for now. I'd be happy to answer any questions. Thank you. Next item is the Business Managers' Report. Mrs. Brady.
So we'll talk a little bit about the 522 board. I know that's not necessarily our responsibility, but the county commissioners did approve a resolution that would allow for a proposition for a 522 board to go to ballot on November 3rd, so that would help support our N1 service, not only in Alva, but also throughout Woods County. The mayor, Winoka, the director for the Freedom EMS department, myself and Director Dennis here in Alva, we are all in support of this 522 board. We'd like to see, see this move forward, so you'll be seeing some more information on that, not only from the county commissioners, but from us as well. Just an update on some open positions that we have. We have EMR, EMT positions currently available with the EMS department. I know Courtney's been doing some interviews for the program coordinator at the REC Center, so hopefully, we'll have someone place in that position soon. And then we are currently here in City Hall working towards an additional clerk's position, so hopefully, we'll have that job posted soon. And then I want to talk a little bit about utility billing. So when we were changing the rates for the new fiscal year, we had a rate increase, obviously, for this month, as many of you are aware. It came to our attention that some of the rate schedules for the water and sewer department were not updated when we changed from 2018 to 2019. We gathered some data, and we realized that we had about $133,000 in lost revenue because those rate schedules did not change. So when we changed our rates this month in July, there are some of you that instead of seeing a 10% rate increase, may see a 20% rate increase instead. We're not going to go back and try to bill those additional months where the change didn't occur, but just notice if, if your bill seems like it's more than 10%, it may very well be. Feel free to contact City Hall and ask any questions that you have. We'll do our best to answer those there. In that same, in that same billing cycle, we also determined that there were several antennas that were not relaying the meter read from the meter to the computer that picks up the meter reads. So the meter itself was calculating and tracking the water appropriately. However, the antenna that relays that information back to us for billing was not working appropriately. So in that, there were several accounts that may, anywhere between six to 24 months, may not have been having consumption on there. So you did, you may have been charged for your regular rate, your base bill for your water, your base bill for your sewer, but whatever you consumed through your water meter wasn't being charged out. So there were about 20 accounts that had those, had that happen, and as a result, you may have gotten a larger bill than what you expected. So if you would contact City Hall, the ladies there would be very happy to talk to you. If it was longer than 12 months, we've given you a credit for those, and we will work to adjust your bill so that you don't have a huge bill if you need to make payment arrangements. We would be happy to make those with you as well. And then my final piece of good news on utility billing is, I know that we have received many phone calls over the last several weeks about utility bills not being delivered to customers. We did receive a phone call from the postmaster today. There was a stack of bills that were replaced in a return to sender bin in Oklahoma City. That bin did not get processed for approximately 10 days. So as a result, there was a large number of bills that were sent out and delivered today. Our city ordinance does state that any unpaid bills will receive a 10% penalty if they're not paid by the 15th. The 15th bill on Saturday, so we gave everyone till the end of business today before that penalty will be assessed. I know in talking with Finance Committee, that's an ordinance that we'd like to maybe take to our ordinance committee for review, in the event that this was not just a glitch in billing, this was something that was beyond our control, we would like to take a look and see if we can maybe change that ordinance to allow for some, from a situation like this. That'd be fair.
So the ones who didn't get theirs because they're in the city, they're still due today?
Yes, ma'am, they were due by today.
Even though they got mailed out today?
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am. That's what the ordinance, that's what the ordinance states, is that we, any unpaid bills would have that.
I mean, it is how, that we get the utility work. They should do on this day, if you didn't get your bill, you pay it every month. It's unfortunate, but.
And the 20 people, I have to say, my son was one of them. And so when we got that bill, I immediately called, and I kept telling me, and I kept reworking it for them, telling them, no, you're figuring this up wrong. Numerous discussions. They finally, I finally figured out that they were doing it correctly. I had to admit I was wrong, but he still had to pay the big hundreds of dollars bill.
So are the water usage, they're making that up and off the, necessarily a penalty for the ones that?
Right, there's no penalty assessed on those as far as the zero consumption ones. We're just going back and billing for the, the consumption that was never billed for, essentially.
And we have some too that are low consumption.
Yes.
And so they're working on all that. It's, it's going to take time.
Any other questions?
Can I go back with the, on the 522 with the ambulance and stuff? Have we, I know we asked a long time ago about, because there was a lot of different ideas about billing companies. Has that been, anything reached on that, or any recommendations came from the fire department on billing?
The fire department, EMS.
I'm sorry, EMS.
No, no, not yet. I know I did receive an email from staff this afternoon before our Finance Committee meeting on, on an update on looking at some billing companies, but we still haven't progressed that forward yet. That will go to Public Safety Committee before it would.
Embarrassing company doing any better?
Not to my knowledge, Mary. We've been working to try to get more information from them, but, but we will hopefully have a better company soon.
Thank you. Are there any other questions from the council? Next item on the agenda is remarks and inquiries by citizens. Any citizens wishing to make a remark to the council this evening may approach the podium. Please do so, state your name, and we will allot you two minutes to address the council. Is there anybody who wish to make a public comment? Yeah, I will say, normally, we have everybody sign in if they're not a member of the staff. I won't ask you to do that right now, but if you would, as you're leaving, if you wouldn't mind signing in at the podium when you leave this evening, that'd be great. We don't usually have this big of a crowd, so.
Why does it have a crowd?
Must be somebody important.
And not a house.
No comments? Okay, thank you. Item nine, excuse me, item eight is the presentation of Police Officer of the Year. I think I saw him. I know I saw him.
There he is.
He's hiding. All right. Ben and Caleb, would you mind, Ben, would you first tell us a little bit about the Police Officer of the Year award?
So we decided just for a little bit of employee recognition that we So we decided just for a little bit of employee recognition that we would, that the Police Department in-house would start our own Officer of the Year Award. When this started, the previous city manager, I spoke with him. And what the recipient that's actually going to get is a paid day off. Movie tickets, if that ever opens again. And.
Sorry.
Yeah. And dinner for two from the city, which is part of the employee recognition program already. He'll just be receiving that for that month. So what we tried to do is kind of mimic the Teacher of the Year Award and how they do theirs. We asked the staff to vote, each person to vote for one, for one person, and told them they can't vote for themselves. And then we took the top three of those and we asked them a lot of really hard questions. We had them fill those out for us. And then we picked five people in the community and gave them their answers without their name on it and said, rank these officers from one to three. Once we received those back, then we, Assistant Chief Holly and I went through them. There is a point system given. Chief Holly and I both have a certain number of points along with each person who voted. And then we selected Police Officer of the Year. And happy to present that this evening to Caleb Kepner, so.
Caleb's had a recent addition to the.
I'll make a much better picture.
Somebody got looking at him.
On three, one, two, three. Okay, one more. One, two, three.
One more.
Caleb, one more.
Caleb, you've been with the department how long now?
A little over two years.
That's what I was thinking. Caleb's doing a great job. I get to work with him professionally from time to time, so not the way you'd think. I'm excited for you and glad you're part of our department and thank you for what you do.
Thank you.
All right. The next item is the Administration of the Oath of Office to Fire Chief Brian Miller. Assistant Chief Miller, would you please come forward? I'm going to, while he's standing in front of everybody, read a little bit about Brian that staff have put together. In 1999, Brian attended OSU/OKC and majored in Fire Protection and Safety and Technologies. Brian started his emergency services career in 2001 with the Alva Police Department as a patrolman. Then he left Alva in 2003 and became a detective in Kansas. Brian returned home to Alva in April of 2005 and started his career in fire service with the Alva Fire Department as a firefighter/EMT. Assistant Chief Miller has a rich family history in the fire, in fire service, and he has followed that tradition. Brian is a fourth-generation firefighter with the Alva Fire Department. In July of 2014, Brian was promoted to the rank of Assistant Fire Chief and was assigned the duties of being Alva's first fire marshal. Brian graduated from Northwest Leadership Class V and currently serves as a board member with the Fire Marshal Association of Oklahoma and with the Oklahoma State Firefighters Public Education Committee. Since Assistant Chief Miller's promotion, he has completed his certification as a certified fire investigator through the National Fire Academy. Brian does so much for our community and I've received many comments since the paper came out and since the word got out about how glad the folks are in this community, most of them. Glad that we were able to choose someone as dedicated to our community as you have been. And it's with that, I will ask you to please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Brian Miller, having been duly appointed.
I, Brian Miller, having been duly appointed.
As the Fire Chief of the City of Alva.
As the Fire Chief of the City of Alva.
And Peace Officer of the State of Oklahoma.
And Peace Officer of the State of Oklahoma.
On my honor, I do solemnly swear.
On my honor, I do solemnly swear.
That I will never betray my badge.
I'll never betray my badge.
My integrity, my character, or the public trust.
My.
I wonder that one would take.
My integrity. My integrity.
My character.
My character.
Or the public trust.
Or the public trust.
I will always have the courage.
I'll always have the courage.
To hold myself and others accountable.
Hold myself and others accountable.
For our actions.
For our actions.
I will always defend.
I'll always defend.
Enforce.
Enforce.
Uphold and obey.
Uphold and obey.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
The State of Oklahoma.
The State of Oklahoma.
And ordinances of the City of Alva.
And the ordinances of the City of Alva.
That I will obey the lawful orders.
I'll obey the lawful orders.
Of my superior officers.
Of my superior officers.
And the regulations of the Alva Fire Department.
And the regulations of the Alva Fire Department.
That I will protect the rights.
I'll protect the rights.
Lives.
Lives.
And property.
And property.
Of all citizens.
Of all citizens.
And uphold the honor.
And uphold the honor.
Of the profession with my life if need be.
Of the profession and my life if need be.
All right. You are the Fire Chief of the City of Alva. Why don't you go ahead and sign that? Make it official. Item 10 is Discussion and Action to Approve an Agreement with the Alva Independent School District to provide a school resource, to provide the, to prove, not just to Brian, to provide a school resource officer for the 2020-2021 school year. This is nothing new for us. We've been providing a school resource officer for the schools for some time now. I believe March 13, 2013 is when we started. This agreement has not changed from the previous year. Is that correct?
I don't, I believe they, I think they added language so that if they don't have school, that they don't have to pay for this, or it was the only thing that's changed.
Okay, well, that makes sense. And therefore, I would entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the resolution to provide a school resource officer for the 2021 school year.
Second. I have a motion by Mr. Eckhart, seconded by Mr. Winters, to approve the agreement with the school district, Alva School District, for a school resource officer for the 2020-2021 school year. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Eckhart?
Yes.
Winters?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Hannifer?
Yes.
Thank you. Item 11 is Discussion and Action to Approve Resolution 2020-007, a resolution concerning funding pursuant to the CARES Act and the Coronavirus Relief Fund, confirming that it is the policy of the city that all public safety personnel costs are substantially dedicated to the COVID-19 response efforts of the city throughout the ongoing state of emergency. Angelica, do you want to?
So recently, the government allocated money, CARES money out to all the municipalities in Oklahoma. Alva has $381,778 that are allocated to us if we have expenses to support that total amount. This resolution is provided to us by our accounting firm that is essentially allowing us to use our, our money for public safety personnel, which will be Fire, Police, EMS, to apply for reimbursement for CARES spending.
And where's, is this saying all costs for those departments?
Yes.
And what?
Salaries too? Yes, ma'am.
Is there any justification that we have to provide? Are they going to ask for anything down the road? I just don't want to say that we accept it and then we lose $150,000 to get past that.
Right. So like I said, this came from our accounting firm to start the process. We will be working with them to make sure that we have all the appropriate documentation, such as invoices, you know, where we're using NextUp to provide our payroll services. All of that information should be aggregated and should be able to put together fairly easily. But though, with their assistance, we'll put the application in and make sure that we're doing everything appropriately so that when it comes back, there wouldn't be anything that would come back against us.
Okay.
And how long do we have to?
We have until November, I believe. Yes. But they are for expenses that began in March and I think through September.
Through September. So we just have to prove okay.
Yes, but we have until November to claim the money.
Okay.
The municipality will be having a webinar.
On Wednesday at 3:00.
Yeah, on Wednesday at 3:00. If any of the council members want to participate, let Angelica know.
Yes.
But the resolution is necessary in order for us to seek that funding. I entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion to approve Resolution 2020-007.
Second.
I have a motion by Mrs. Hamilton and a second by Mr. Winters to approve Resolution 2020-007 concerning CARES Act and Coronavirus Relief Funds for the City of Alva. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Winters?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
Hannifer?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Item 12 is Discussion and Action to Approve Resolution 2020-008, a fiscal year 2019/2020 budget amendment of $91,572 for the purchase of street materials to complete street repairs. So during the, and Angelica even went in later, but last year, there were approximately $91,572 more spent on street materials than budgeted. The general fund transferred revenue to the Street and Alley Fund to accommodate those expenses, and this, this resolution approves that spending.
So that's exactly correct. It's for last year, so it does not impact this year's budget. I know when I, when I was visiting with Finance Committee about this before the City Council meeting, wanted to just highlight the fact that all of this money was spent the first half of the fiscal year. We spent very little money from essentially February to June on street repairs because we had already overspent our budget for the year. And so.
Angelica, I think the question's going to be from everybody is the $5 add-on, how much did that cover?
The $5 add-on that we have on our street, for our street fee, is about $125,000 to $130,000 a year. So we budgeted originally $200,000 a year, or $200,000 last year, and we spent $292,000 when it was all said and done. So I know we wanted to do a lot of work on a lot of streets last year, and this, this money helped, will help cover that, those costs.
If there are any other questions, I would entertain a motion.
So we're passing a resolution this year to amend last year's budget?
Yes, we have to, basically, no, everything has come in at the end of the year, you know, our year ended in June. Basically, all the tallies are in essentially, and so we have to go ahead and amend that and send that amendment on to the State Auditor and Inspector's Office to stay compliant with our budget.
It's basically an accounting.
Yes, yes. And if you remember, we did, we did the same thing at the end of last year in October. We had a very similar budget amendment.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2020-008, an FY20 budget amendment of $91,572 for purchase of street materials to complete street repairs.
Second.
I have a motion by Dr. Hannifer and a second by Mr. Wallace to approve Resolution 2020-008, a 2019/2020 budget amendment of $91,572 for street materials and street repairs. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Hannifer?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Winters?
Yes.
Item 13 is Discussion and Action to Approve the Renewal of the City of Alva Property Protection Plan in an amount not to exceed $55,274. Angelica?
So the next two expenses are very routine, routine expenses. So this first one is for our, our property insurance that we have for the City of Alva. O-MAG provides this insurance for us. It's over by $25,000 spending limit, so we need to come back to the City Council for approval, but it is our annual renewal for our property insurance.
I would entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the renewal of the City of Alva Property Protection Plan in an amount not to exceed $55,274.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Winters and a second by Mrs. Hamilton to approve the renewal of the City of Alva Property Protection Plan not to exceed $55,274. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Winters?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Hannifer?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
Next item is Discussion and Action to Approve the Renewal of the City of Alva Liability Protection Plan in an amount not to exceed $53,287. And same thing as the last item, is something we do every year. It's over the Business Manager's spending limit and requires council approval.
And this is our auto liability and equipment insurance.
I'm making a motion to approve the renewal of the City of Alva Liability Protection Plan in an amount not to exceed $53,287.
I have a motion by Mr. Winters and a second by Mr. Wallace to approve the renewal of the City of Alva Liability Protection Plan in an amount not to exceed $53,287. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Winters?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Hannifer?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Item 15 is Discussion and Action to Approve the Agreement Between the City of Alva and the Board of County Commissioners to Provide E911 Dispatching Services for the City of Alva. Angelica?
So this also is an annual expense that we have. However, it has decreased. In previous years, it was $47,592. Woods County Dispatch has taken on another, another.
City.
City, yeah. Another city, exactly, another county. And so as a result, that reduces the amount of fee that we have to pay. We just, they just take that expense and spread that over all the, all the communities that they dispatch for. So this will take it down to $30,000 for this fiscal year, which we've budgeted for $47,592. So we'll have a little bit of room in our budget now in the police department for this.
I'll make a motion to approve the agreement between the City of Alva, the Board of County Commissioners, for providing E911 dispatching services for the City of Alva, the current contract renewal of $30,000.
I have a motion by Dr. Hannifer and a second by Mr. Winters to approve the agreement between the City of Alva and the Board of County Commissioners to provide E911 dispatching services for the City of Alva, not to, for the contract renewal of $30,000. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Hannifer?
Yes.
Winters?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Item 16 is Discussion and Action to Approve Amendment Number Two of the Owner/Engineer Agreement with CEC Corporation. The CEC, the engineering firm, became the airports engineer in 2019. This amendment to our agreement with them is for the O'Dell's Light System. Particularly, this has to do with the engineering for boring underneath Harper Road to run electrical lines for the lighting system. It was something that they weren't able to predict in preparing, or in the original agreement. So this adds in what that is after they, and they've done it already, haven't they? No, they have not. They have not. But after they've further inspected it, this is what that affirms.
Do you know how much that is?
Airport Board approved it. That's the recommendation to the council.
I'll make the motion then to approve Amendment Number Two of the Owner/Engineer Agreement with CEC Corporation.
I have a motion by Mrs. Hamilton and a second by Mr. Wallace to approve Amendment Number Have a motion by Mrs. Hamilton and a second by Mr. Wallace to approve Amendment Number Two of Owner/Engineer Agreement with CEC Corporation. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Hannaford?
Yes.
Winters?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Item 17 is discussion and action to award the base bid and alternate number one to Contech Inc. in an amount of $574,469 and approve change order number one, reducing the final contract amount to $522,823 for the apron expansion project Phase One at the Alva Regional Airport. This is a little bit different and the Board, Airport Board discussed this to some extent. The bids that were received to do both the base bid and the alternate bid, when you combine them both together, they exceeded the amount of FAA funding that was available in our grant. So to take just the base bid alone, we would have, versus the base bid and the alternate, to take the base bid at this time, we would have been foregoing additional FAA funds. So it was decided that we would take the base bid, change the alternate bid to reduce the amount of resurfacing that we would do, but we would still do the entirety of the base of the apron project. So by doing this and combining the reduction of the alternate one based on volume of materials and labor, it made Contech, is that right? Yeah, Contech, it made them the overall lower bidder. And interestingly, the two bids for both projects altogether were only, they were in like $125 bucks of each other. So that's nuts. But the Airport Board is recommending approval of this bid and alternate.
So I'm gonna summarize to make sure I understood that. We went out for a bid for a base and then a bid for a base and then some additional. And we could do the base with grant funds and the base and the additional, we couldn't. But if we had took off some of the additional, we could do some of the additional through the grant funds. So we rebid with a smaller additional.
We did not, we did not rebid. We took, both of the bidders submitted volume quantities and dollar amount and rates. And so we took their rates and the volumes that were specified and we just reduced their alternate by those amounts.
Okay.
So instead of 10, we could do 7. And so we, the alternate was reduced by 30% for just basic, you know, explanation. The, there is an opportunity also, though, to go back and request more funding from the FAA for more of the project if we get going through and deem that we do need to go ahead and do that. So the rest of the resurfacing. I'd entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to award the base bid and alternate number one to Contech Incorporated in an amount of $574,469 and approve change order number one, reducing the final contract amount to $522,823 for the apron expansion project Phase One of the Alva Regional Airport.
Second.
Have a motion by Dr. Hannaford and a second by Mrs. Hamilton to award the base bid and alternate number one to Contech Inc. in the amount of $574,469 and approve change order number one, reducing the final contract to $522,823 for the apron expansion project Phase One at the Alva Regional Airport. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Hannaford?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Winters?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
18 is discussion and action to approve Amendment Number Three of the Owner/Engineer Agreement with CEC Corporation. This amendment allows CEC to be utilized for the Phase One bidding.
Well, for bidding and then inspection and oversight of the project.
The previous engineer did the design work for the apron project and all of that, so this now brings CEC into this particular project for the airport. And the Airport Board approved this amendment as well, and so that'd be my recommendation to the council. I'd entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve Amendment Number Three of Owner/Engineer Agreement with CEC Corporation. Second.
Have a motion by Mr. Winters, or Mr. Wallace and a second by Mr. Winters to approve Amendment Number Three of the Owner/Engineer Agreement with CEC Corporation. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Wallace?
Yes.
Winters?
Yes.
Hannaford?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
Item 19 is discussion and action to approve Resolution 2020-009, accepting the FAA grant offer for airport improvement project AIP 340-0003-014-2020 at Alva Regional Airport for apron expansion Phase One and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute the grant agreement and all necessary documents. This is a total grant of $663,332, and it does not require any matching funds. It's 100% grant and it is to be able to do the Phase One of the apron project that we just approved the CEC to take part in.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2020-009. Second.
Have a motion by Mr. Winters and a second by Mr. Wallace to approve Resolution 2020-009, accepting the FAA grant for the airport. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Winters?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Hannaford?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Item 20 is discussion and action to enter into executive session pursuant to 25 OS307B2 to discuss contract negotiations with IAFF Local 3782, Alva, Oklahoma. I'd entertain a motion.
A motion to enter into executive session?
Second.
Have a motion by Mr. Winters and a second by Mrs. Hamilton to enter into executive session for firefighter union negotiations, contract negotiations. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Winters?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
Hannaford?
Yes.
I'll have the council members, Mr. Cunningham and our clerks and business manager remain and the rest of you will let you know.
Make the motion to approve the negotiation contacts with IAFF Local 3782, Alva, Oklahoma.
Second.
Have a motion by Mrs. Hamilton and a second by Mr. Stelling to approve the contract negotiations with IAFF Local 3782, Alva, Oklahoma. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Hannaford?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
Winters?
Yes.
Next item is new business. I don't believe there is any. Item 24, remarks and inquiries by council members. Item 25 is adjourned. So we will adjourn the city council meeting and call to order the regular meeting of the Alva Utility Authority. When you're ready, please call the roll.
Wallace?
Here.
Hannaford? Stelling?
Here.
Hamilton?
Here.
Winters?
Here.
Eckhart?
Here.
Sherman? Martin?
Item three is discussion and action on the consent agenda. All of the following items which concern reports and items of a routine nature normally approved at AUA meetings will be approved by one vote of the authority. Any trustee desiring to discuss an item on the consent agenda may request that it be removed from the consent agenda and placed for discussion as the next item on the regular agenda. It will then be considered separately. The consent agenda consists of the consideration and action on the following items. Approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of July 20, 2020. Approval of claims in the amount of $119,323.44 and payroll expenses of $54,754.15. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve the consent agenda? Second.
Have a motion by Mr. Winters and a second by Mr. Wallace to approve the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Winters?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Hannaford?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
All right, and we will adjourn the utility authority meeting and call to order the regular meeting of the Alva Economic Development Authority. When you're ready, please call the roll.
Eckhart?
Yeah, here.
Winters?
Here.
Stelling?
Here.
Hamilton?
Here.
Wallace?
Here.
Hannaford?
Here.
Sherman? Martin?
Item three is discussion and action on the consent agenda. All of the following items which concern reports and items of a routine nature normally approved at AEDA meetings will be approved by one vote of the authority. Any trustee desiring to discuss an item on the consent agenda may request that it be removed from the consent agenda and placed for discussion as the next item on the regular agenda. It will then be considered separately.